I now call the February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Wallingford Swathmore School Board to order. In opening, as you are willing and able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the flag which stands one vicious, ungodly, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Ms. Mosley, would you please take attendance roll call?
Mrs. Dole?
Here.
Dr. Grande?
Here.
Mr. Henry?
Here.
Mrs. Holbert?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Wattman?
Here.
Ms. Whitsett?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Wukowski Smith?
Here.
Nine voting members present.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Moving on to student representative's report, and Ms. Wang, please take it away. Thank you.
Hello, thank you. So, good evening, everyone. It has been a fun, snow and Eagles-filled month, and great things have been happening all over our school. Firstly, February third through seventh was National School Counseling Week, so we want to thank our wonderful school counselors from across the district. Especially now as a senior, words cannot express how much I, along with our community, appreciate all of the support our school counselors provide in our academic and personal lives. Since the last meeting, we've also transitioned into a new, little new year, in which on Friday, February seventh, the Middletown Free Library teamed up with the Chinese-American Parents Association of Rose Street Media School District and the Chinese-American Parents Association of the Wallingford Swathmore School District to celebrate the Chinese New Year. Moving to our elementary schools, NPE received a generous seed donation from Johnny's Selected Seeds for their twenty twenty-five growing season. These seeds will be used in their community garden, helping our students learn about gardening, sustainability, and the power of growing our own food. Thank you, Johnny's Selected Seeds, for supporting our school and our community. On February twenty first, local award-winning children's book author and illustrator June Beretta visited third through fifth graders at West to share his book, Now and Then: The Modern Inventions of Benjamin Franklin. And finally, stay tuned for Family Bingo Night on SRS on February twenty eighth, from four PM to five PM. On February sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth, the Strathhaven Middle School's theater program was hard at work performing Disney's Newsies. All of the cast, crew, and pit did an amazing job putting together an incredible show. Then, on February thirteenth, the Strathhaven Middle School brought back a wonderful tradition in hosting an exciting and competitive student versus faculty basketball game to support the eighth-grade development project. At the high school, three buses of Strathhaven students traveled to Citizens Bank Park on January thirty first for the Philadelphia Cool Schools Polar Plunge in support of the Special Olympics of Pennsylvania. Through their dedication and fundraising efforts, they raised an incredible six thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. February is Black History Month. On February fourth, Strathhaven High School gathered in the high school auditorium to watch a wonderfully wonderful assemble organized by the Young Activists Coalition, Black Student Union, and other members of our community. They celebrated Black History throughout the decades in a wide variety of formats: music, dance, poetry, and even as a game show. February is also Career and Technical Education Month, and we're celebrating the hard-working Strathhaven High School students who are gaining hands-on experience and real-world skills through the amazing programs at the Delaware County Technical High Schools. On February first, our high school jazz band traveled to the other side of media to participate in a fun and music-filled ten-cress jazz night. Then, less than two weeks later, our music program kept the fun going as Silvertones traveled around the high school on February thirteenth to bring Valentine's Day cheer. The following long weekend, Strathhaven High School students headed to Quebec to visit the Winter Carnival. The trip north was filled with many winter adventures and activities highlighting Quebec's culture, including snowshoeing and curling. And finally, this week marks the beginning of World Language Week here at Strathhaven. With fun events like today's International Bake Off and our annual World Cup in the gym on Wednesday, stay tuned for a week of information and activities between the Chinese, German, Spanish, and French departments. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. If I could just add to that, I know you'll probably have this next, your next report, good luck to the IQ team next week, I believe. And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not in this case, uh, Mamma Mia starts on Friday.
Yes, it does.
I believe, this weekend, so, uh, we'll see you all there at the show. So, I'm sorry?
It's Tech Week!
It's Tech Week. So, yes, yes, it is Tech Week. So, uh, good luck to the theater group as well. Uh, now, moving on to superintendent report, and Dr. Scanlon, please.
Yes, sure. Thank you, Mr. Henry. And, uh, Tindra, thanks for mentioning the middle school, uh, show, Newsies. I had a chance to see that. Um, there were a hundred sixty-seven students involved in that musical. That was a lot. I mean, that was quite a production between the stage crew and the performers and the pit. So, uh, it's a great way for kids to get involved. It was an awesome show, so, so thank you. And good luck to Mamma Mia this week. It's gonna be, it's gonna be another awesome show. A couple things from my report tonight. First of all, uh, in a, in a completely unsolicited demonstration of support, I want to share some of the comments that we've heard about, uh, one of our, um, one of our carpenters, Bob Scales. Uh, he, our HR director, Dr. Salini, conducts exit interviews with employees who retire or, or who leave to, to pursue other, other opportunities. Uh, and repeatedly from custodians and from maintenance employees who provided input during those exit interviews, uh, she's heard an awful lot about Bob Scales. Now, Bob's only been with us since May of twenty twenty-four, so in less than a year, uh, he's, he's gotten these positive shout-outs that reference his ability to get along with others, his knowledge and expertise in multiple trade areas, his willingness to teach others, and his work ethic. Uh, and for such a new member of our team, he's certainly made an impression on the operations staff and all the people that he's, he's touched and had to do some projects with, uh, both new people and veteran people as well. So, thanks, Bob, just a shout-out to Bob Scales for all, all that he's doing, uh, to make, to make things better for everybody in the school district. Uh, Bus Patrol update, let me just give a little, uh, update on that. Uh, several months ago, the board approved, uh, entering into an agreement with Bus Patrol. Now, Bus Patrol is, uh, is, is where they put, uh, cameras on buses, and our, our transportation supervisor, Allison Sloane, confirmed with, uh, both Nether Providence and Swathmore Police Departments, uh, that they have completed their training with Bus Patrol. All of the cameras have been installed on the buses, and they are now, um, actively enforcing violations. Uh, so it's now operational, and again, there's no cost to the school district to install these cameras on the buses, and the buses take, they photograph license plates of cars or vehicles that are running through the, the, the flashing bus lights when the buses are stopped. So, they've been active, uh, since February thirteenth, and in the first ten days, we've heard from Nether Providence Police, they've already started to issue violations and tickets. Uh, so I, I let everybody know that they are out there. Do not run the bus lights, because it's points on your license, and it's a three-hundred-dollar fine. Uh, about fifty percent of that goes for the technology and paying for the cameras, which is how this is, this is paid for. Um, and then the remaining money is paid to court costs, and then anything left over after that is split between the school district and police departments. Uh, so, so Bus Patrol is up and operational, and, uh, just beware when those lights are flashing. Stop. That means stop, and please do. Uh, tomorrow, uh, February twenty-fifth at seven o'clock, Dr. Ian Sandberg, our Director of Student Services for Personalized Learning and Related Services, will host the fourth installment of the, uh, virtual So What Happens Next series, and that's intended to engage stakeholders about topics in special ed and gifted education. Tomorrow's session will continue on last month's theme about inclusion and differentiation. And in tomorrow's session, Dr. Sandberg will present longitudinal data related to the least restrictive environment for both the district and the state, and he welcomed guest speaker Lauren Cavone from In Mind Services, who will provide an overview on the future of inclusion and special education. So please visit the district's website to see the flyer and the link, and if you, uh, have some time tomorrow evening, uh, tune into Dr. Sandberg's show. February is Black History Month, and many of our schools have been participating in activities, uh, or they've been learning about the positive impact that African-Americans have had on United States history. I had the pleasure of attending an annual High School Student Leadership Institute, sponsored by the, the Pennsylvania Graduate School of Education and the Delaware Valley Consortium for Equity and Excellence. Now escorted by Dr. Mazakowski, we had a team of eight high school students attend this session and participate in the activities. As part of the event, I had the honor of serving as a judge for the student projects, where they focused on current issues impacting their schools, uh, and, and some solutions that they're, they're, uh, very passionate about to address. Entries were made by students from more than thirty high schools in the four-county area and the city of Philadelphia. These young people had some excellent ideas on how to develop a positive culture in a school where all are welcomed and accepted, regardless of race, religious beliefs, or gender identity. Students also entered, uh, into a, a, uh, poetry contest. It was called the Poetry Slam Contest. And I'm proud to announce that, uh, Strathhaven High School freshman Bianca Blake won the conference Poetry Slam. Uh, Bianca's here tonight, and I've asked her to come out tonight and, and recite her poem for the board, uh, for her winning poem of the century. So Bianca, thanks so much to come out, joined by some of your family members here tonight, so thank you for coming out. So Bianca, I'm gonna ask you to come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as Dr. Scanlon said, my name is Bianca Blake. I am a ninth-grade student at Strathhaven High School, and here is my poem, "American Tears." I remember in third grade when they asked us to sing "American Tears", but why should I cry for a country that is built off of blood, bones, and fear? Years later, they asked us to write letters to soldiers who fought for our country bigger, braver, and bolder. I wrote, "Dear soldier, I wish I wasn't writing this letter. I wish you didn't have to fight, and we could all love each other for the better." Better yet, today, I stare at my paper about Christian charity, about the city on the hill, but if that city was stolen, what makes us so worthy of prosperity? So enjoy this moment. Enjoy being here, because for some, human rights aren't crystal clear. I refuse to cry "American Tears," for I will weep and woe for those who lived in fear, the tears of the immigrants, the tears of the slaves, the tears who lie in their graves. So please, save your sorrows and your prayers, for when someone finally speaks up, everyone stops and stares.
Bianca, thank, thank you so much for, for sharing that, and, uh, it was quite an honor to be at that conference and hear you speak about your project, uh, with your classmates as well. Um, and Bianca had the opportunity to recite that poem, and about, about four hundred other students from the area, along with some, some staff from, uh, like I said, more than thirty high schools in the four-county area, region, and, uh, and, and the city of Philadelphia. So, that was, that was all at Upper Marion High School who hosted that conference, and we thank them for, uh, for the venue and the setup. And Bianca, again, congratulations. We're so proud of you. Thanks for coming out. I also would like to, uh, uh, finish my report and turn it over to, uh, Mr. Al Heinley. We have, uh, we have students here from, uh, Nether Providence Elementary School, uh, and some members of their student council, uh, and they're gonna talk about nurtured heart and some other points of pride at NPE. Mr. Heinley, they're all yours.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Scanlon, uh, school board members. It feels like just yesterday, I was up here last year, talking about, um, NPE, and as you know, I could probably talk for a couple of hours about NPE. I'm the proud principal, um, of NPE, and, uh, it's been a busy year. And, uh, we have a lot of academic initiatives, which I know you're familiar with, the ninety-five, uh, percent group in ELA. We're looking at new programs. We've implemented a new math program. There we go. I'm not gonna talk about any of them tonight. I'm gonna talk about the next initiative that NPE took on, uh, just NPE. Last year, I stood here and talked about the nurtured heart approach, and how it was about, um, there's a lot of different parts of nurtured heart. I'm focusing on one tonight. Um, so there's a lot that's going on that isn't necessarily part of this presentation. But, uh, last year, we had volunteers, staff volunteers, to go through a training that was ongoing. Five hours, uh, I believe, initial, followed by an hour-long monthly meeting with a cohort. Separate from me, outside trainers come in from, I believe, Effective School Solutions. At the end, the teachers said, "This is a meaningful PD that we need to expand for our students, how we interact with students, how we create positive learning environments for our students." So, Dr. McCullough, uh, really did a lot of work behind the scenes to secure, uh, additional monies this year. So the bulk of the presentation tonight is going to be about nurtured heart. Um, but, uh, and I'm not stealing this from Coach Siriani. I think he went through nurtured heart, because you're gonna hear the word greatness, and I heard a quote after the Super Bowl, you know, something, "You can't be great without the greatness of others." And I don't think that that, I, I think that would sum up our building right now. And, um, the greatness in our students, our staff, our parent community, um, the academics are important, but we continue to strive to create positive learning environments for our students. So, I'm gonna be talking a lot about greatness tonight. Um, I have our student council reps here. Um, I want to recognize their greatness, which, uh, is leadership, working hard, having to make tough decisions. Um, and I have a second-grade friend here who's gonna talk about some examples of what nurtured heart actually looks like. So I'm gonna give a brief overview, and you're probably gonna say, "What does it look like?" Right? Um, it's tangible, it's intentional, um, but it's to foster positive relationships between students and staff. So, just a brief overview, but the focus tonight is greatness, but there's a lot more that's going on, uh, with nurtured heart. So, just to start, NPE is the place to be, as the motto has been for many years, and I couldn't be more proud to be here tonight to celebrate, uh, the hard work of the staff this year, taking on another initiative. Students who are, who are chomping at the bit to participate tonight and share their experience, uh, with a few brief words tonight. Uh, nurtured heart training, as I said, I'm gonna talk about the greatness, celebrating the greatness of our students. Uh, recognizing student council. Student council's been around at NPE for decades. Um, and, uh, school board members, you probably don't hear about student government at the elementary level. So I thought, let's do nurtured heart, and let's celebrate their greatness. So, I have my two, my president, my vice president here tonight, so they're gonna give you a little bit of overview, um, about their greatness and their role at NPE. So, starting out, nurtured heart, and I'm, I'm gonna start with, what did it look like in terms of time? New math, new language arts. We're still gonna do five hours of training in August on nurtured heart. Effective, uh, School Solutions came in, shared the strategies, shared what it looks like in all environments. Um, talked about how adults use it. There's, there's part of nurtured heart. I'm not gonna talk about it too much. Uh, but our students know what a reset is, right? Uh, Mr. Heinley takes about three resets a day. So part of nurtured heart is understanding where you are as a person that day. Some days we come in, we don't know that someone had a flat tire on the way in. Their greatness is that they came to work that day. And that's what we're looking at. You know, we're, we're looking at, you know, you could make other decisions, but you're making this decision. So, uh, five hours of training in August twenty twenty-four, thirty staff members. We broke the thirty staff members into three cohorts of ten. They meet with a coach, monthly, for an hour at eight AM. The coach then goes and visits the classrooms, not evaluative, talks about the, um, the intentionality of talking about greatness and the other parts of nurtured heart. So, staff members are meeting with a cohort, and you sit in a cohort, and you acknowledge each other's greatness. We tend to talk about what, what the problems are, what's not working, what's difficult. When you stop and say, "Well, your greatness is," you always have a kind word to say, and you see a staff member's face light up. So that, those are the kind of things we're trying to do in the building. Classroom visitations, the coaches visits the classroom, visit the classroom on a monthly basis, and there's ongoing feedback and discussion. Um, just kind of very quickly, the nurtured heart, the classroom impact, this is what the, uh, what we're striving for. Stronger classroom culture, increased student engagement, improved educator reflection about their practice, and calmer learning environments. Um, those are the things we're looking for, and the coaching process has four domains that help accomplish these areas. They are the environment, uh, nurturing, supportive classroom atmosphere that highlights student strengths. Uh, recognition and feedback, frequent and meaningful acknowledgement of positive behaviors and positive actions. To me, this is always the biggest one, relationships. Uh, strong, respectful, and caring relationships between teachers and students, characterized by open communication. Um, talking about, "I think I need a reset right now," and teachers know what that is, students know what that is. Take a reset, come back to the learning, and work through the different, um, emotions that we have during a school day. And the last one is the self-regulation and empowerment, helping students develop self-regulation skills, reset, and a sense of personal empowerment, leading to improved behavior and academic outcomes. So nurtured heart looks different for every student, as you can imagine. Uh, but the teachers are using key strategies to make sure they're reaching all the students in their room. Um, this is hot off the press, uh, so I haven't really had a chance to dive into this with Dr. McCullough, but we received the, um, and I really haven't even had a chance to, to talk about it with staff, uh, kind of the report card from the coaches, kind of mid-year, and the graphs, I'll, I'll read the bottom part for you, but the blue is baseline self-reflection from teachers back in, I believe, in August. So the first part is classroom environment score. Now, I don't have the questions, but this is just to give you an idea, though, about their self-reflection. Um, sixteen percent increase in how teachers, how staff are viewing the classroom environment from a positive lens. Interpersonal relationships, plus fourteen. Um, recognition and feedback score, plus twenty-seven, and that's why I'm focusing on the greatness, because that's what's happening, intentionality in classrooms, in the hallway. Thank you for your greatness of whatever that might be. Um, and the final one, self-regulation and empowerment score, a plus nineteen. So students and staff, and the trainers say you can use it at home with your spouse or partner, and I can say that is true. Hopefully, she's not gonna see this. Um, but being aware of self-regulation, and these, these two, the last two areas, um, they really impact students at a young age. When you have students at the elementary age who, um, kind of recognize where they are in their learning, that's really powerful as they get older and develop, so they can be advocates with their parents, their guardians, their teachers, and say, "Hey, I'm, I'm really struggling today." Instead of acting out, uh, we talk about not giving energy. That's another part of NH, uh, nurtured heart, is not giving energy to negative situations. Give our energy to positive situations. Some days, we're better than others with that, uh, but that is the focus. That is the goal. All right. What does it look like? Now we're gonna get into some of the nitty-gritty. This is a third-grade learning support room. Uh, Ms. Doherty, she posts some of the greatnesses, and we're gonna work on them, and that's what she tells her students. So the greatness of cheerfulness, focus, and motivation. So she will look, they'll talk about these, uh, greatnesses. Ms. Doherty will give out dolphin dollars when she sees the, uh, uh, these examples happening in the classroom. So again, it's intentional. It's intentional. Students are being rewarded, but there's visual reminders all over the building and in many classrooms, and it looks different from classroom to classroom. Uh, this is a fifth-grade classroom, which just happened, my two friends here happen to be in, uh, Mrs. Peterson's class. Uh, we, some of the language that we use are emotionally nutritious words. And what that means is, uh, uh, we have signs up here like, "I am calm, I am, uh, caring, I am," and just words that, um, reinforce and support, uh, students' beliefs about themselves. So that's, uh, my two friends here, that's their classroom, um, in the back by, by the sink. Uh, greatness recognition. This is a resource that the coaches, uh, have provided some of our teachers. Uh, just a note that you can leave to a student, uh, to so-and-so, "I noticed that you were blank," when blank shows the greatness of being responsible, being safety first, respect. So you can see nurtured heart ties right in. I haven't said it yet tonight, but PBIS. It totally kind of dovetails into the work that we've been, that we established about four or five years ago. We're trying to take it to the next level. So, um, I have a young friend tonight. She's just gonna tell you a little bit. She's in Mrs. Clark's, uh, second-grade class. So she's gonna tell you about how Mrs. Clark, in her class, recognizes the greatness of her students. And I have to give a big shout-out to Mrs. Clark, because I think she had these affectionately called swag tags. Swag tags? I think before we started this initiative, so I have to give her a big shout-out for that. So I'm gonna invite Vivian Conron to come on up. And she's gonna tell you about how Mrs. Clark implements nurtured heart.
My name is Vivian Conron. I'm a second grader at Nether Providence Elementary. I am in Ms. Clark's class. In our class, we recognize and celebrate everyone's own greatness. Each student shows their own greatness with what we call a swag tag. A swag tag is a necklace that each student has hanging on our wall. We earn different tags based on our actions. For example, I have a tag that says "hard worker." I earned this tag after I took a math test. Ms. Clark noticed that I had a bit of a hard time, and she noticed that I kept trying harder and harder. I like the idea of swag tags because they can show my individual qualities and greatness. I think my class likes the swag tags because each time they earn a tag, they get really happy. I don't know much about being a school board member, but I think you would need to possess some great qualities, such as being a wise decision-maker, show courage, and have the ability to stick with hard tasks. Thank you for all that you do.
And as I said at the very start, I also, sorry, I brought, uh, my stu, two student council president and vice president. Uh, we've talked about their greatness, and it also is part of the greatness of our staff. We've had student council for many, many years. Um, and long before we started nurtured heart, I've seen qualities, um, bless you, um, in our students. Uh, and they do so much good work that I really wanted to bring them out tonight for them to share their own greatnesses with you, and what our student council looks like. Uh, they're also gonna talk about our two stu, uh, staff, uh, facilitators, Mr. Dudrick and Mr. Biscali, Mr. B. Um, and they're gonna thank them, you know, for displaying the qualities that they have. But, uh, um, I couldn't be prouder, um, of all three of my friends for coming out tonight, but, uh, um, like to introduce Anna Fleming and, uh, Max Tucker. They're gonna tell you a little bit about, uh, student council.
Good evening, Dr. Scanlon and the school board members. My name is Anna Fleming. I'm the student council president.
My name is Max Tucker. I'm the student council vice president.
Max and I are going to spend a couple of minutes explaining how our student council runs. The student council is a group of students that come together to talk about the issues and successes in our school. There are two members per class and four officers. In all, there are forty-four student council members. It takes some responsibility to represent your class, so some of the responsibilities are asking your class for feedback about the school. Another thing that the student council does is every year, we do the officer's election, where whoever is running for office will give their speech. The speech-giving part is the hardest part of being an officer. While giving a speech in front of your peers isn't hard, in front of the whole school, it's pretty terrifying.
Once a month, on Thursday morning at eight-ten, the student council officers will meet with Mr. B. and Mr. Dudrick for an officers' meeting. And on Friday each month, the whole student council will meet with Mr. B. and Mr. Dudrick for a student council meeting. Once we s, are inside the min, meeting room, one of the officers will hit the gavel, signaling the meeting to start. At each meeting, the students will get a chance to share what they believe needs to be improved at the school. Another monthly activity we do is the school store, where students will come in to sell pencils, erasers, et cetera. I wanted to do student council because I wanted to help make NPE better.
We do many projects in the student council. Recently, we just finished our second annual Super Bowl. It is where we collect canned goods in the lobby. We, and we have two tables, where there's a photo of each team on each table. And by the end of the week, whichever table has more cans is the team that NPE will be rooting for in the Super Bowl. Of course, we voted for the Eagles by an overwhelming margin. We were very excited to see them win. In addition, this spring, we are hoping to do a fundraiser for the Californian wild, wildfires and hurricane relief, like we do for Jump Rope for Heart.
On behalf of the school, we would like to thank Mr. B. and Mr. Dudrick for showing hard work and dedication. We appreciate their support and leadership. They have shown us the greatness of leadership. We would like to, and now, we would like to recognize the greatness that you all show as school board leaders. We would like to present swag tags to all of you with the qualities that Vivian had mentioned earlier. We would like to recognize your greatness of being wise decision-makers, showing courage, and your ability to stick with hard tasks. Thank you for having us tonight.
Uh, Vivian, Anna, Max, thank you so much. Uh, these, uh, let me just read a couple of these. These are appropriate for board members. Uh, this is what they say, these swag tags.
This is what they say, these swag tags. Does this resonate with a board member sticking with hard tasks? Right? I have courage. And finally, wise decision makers. So thank you, they are, they're right on, right on point. Thank you so much, guys.
Heidi, you're not going anywhere, are you? Did you, did you, did you have, you have like a minute for us to thank you? I could, oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah, if you would, Anna and Max and Vivian, thank you. So thank all of you, thank you all, first of all, and I wanted to ask the board members if they had any comments, questions for our N P E folks up there. Mary Jo, please.
I have a big thank you. I mean, N P E is the place to be, and, and I think you, you know, Vivian, Anna, Max, and, and Mr. Heinley, exhibit the greatness of your hearts, because you came and presented to us in a beautiful way, and I think that you represent your school in just an absolute wonderful way, and it is always my favorite part of the board meeting when we hear from, from students. So thank you for coming, and thank you for talking to us tonight.
I just wanted to thank you as well, and I hope that this will carry on into the future, and that you'll hopefully carry this through into middle school and high school, and you can, you know, continue to be, you know, student council people there, maybe even a school board member in the future, never know.
Just no length, please.
Yeah, I'll just jump in and say, I was blown away, you guys did such a great job, really and truly, and Mr. Heinley, it was also great to see some of the data from the program, you know, that was really encouraging and really helped to bring it to life, so thank you for that as well.
So Vivian, Anna, and Max, way to go, and way to go, parents. Nice job, I know that that's not easy, and Mr. Heinley and the thirty teachers who worked on this nurture hearts, bravo. I love that it's an individualized plan specifically for N P E, I think that that's really a cool thing, so obviously we're seeing the benefits, so thank you.
Swatman, please.
I just wanted, Vivian and Anna and Max, I wanted to share that I think that you guys are excellent public speakers, you're inspirational leaders, and you're pretty seriously brave, because to tell me just, you know, you guys, I think it was, who was it? Anna, you said that giving a speech in front of the whole school is terrifying, and you just did it in front of a bunch of adults in a big meeting, so you guys are amazing, thank you so much. And, and Mr. Heinley, I think that we should offer that Mr. Heinley is one amazing principal, don't you think?
So I'll wrap that, it's hard, it's hard to top that, so I won't top that, but, but I'll agree with those comments, very brave to speak up there. Vivian, Anna, Max, thank you for coming here and talking to us, and thank you for these, it reminds us of what we're supposed to be doing, so thank you for that. And Mr. Heinley, if you'll permit me to say, I think your greatness is, one of, one of the many things that make you great, I think, is, is the attitude and enthusiasm you bring to N P E. The reason it's the place to be, one of the many reasons, is you, and, and anytime I've ever seen you, you're, that enthusiasm radiates out of you, so it's one of many. So thank you for all you do for the kids, N P E, the place to be, and thank you all, it was, it was really great, it was fun. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, it's hard to top that, but we must, we must, we must crack on, as they say. All right, now we move on to board announcer, I'm sorry. Okay, didn't want to, didn't want to cut you off at the knees. Moving on to board announcements, the board did meet an executive session prior to the board meeting. I'm letting everybody slip out. Moving on to audience recognition in response to items for action on the agenda, this is the time on the agenda where we give opportunity for public comment for items on the agenda, we will have time later for topics not on the agenda. As a reminder, public comment is a time for district residents and taxpayers to speak to the board about an issue that is before the board, or maybe come before the board, is a time for us to listen and hear perspectives and experiences from our community. While we can't answer all the questions at the meeting, there is always ample opportunity to follow up after meetings, if there's a specific question, because we want to give as many people an opportunity to speak, we will continue to follow our three-minute time limit, and I'll let you know when you're hitting that one-minute limit, and so you can wrap it up. And when you go up to the podium, please state your full name and the name of the street in which you live in our district. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak about a topic on the agenda? Please.
Good evening, my name is Mandy Jubilee, I'm at one-ten Cameron Drive in Wallingford. So I come tonight to speak about the most recent ed affairs meeting, which took part, took place on February fifth, and it left me with great pause. So pertaining to the portion of that ed affairs meeting related to the E L A curriculum review process, various data points were referenced. The first that was of concern is the glaring difference, excuse me, in literacy gains between students in grades K-two and students in grades three through five. Students in grades K to two are showing growth due to improvements that have been made across these grades. Students in grades three through five are showing a decline. Sadly, this is no surprise, as the school district personnel responsible for creating the systems and structures designed to foster this literacy growth for all students, has said repeatedly in the past that it was too much of a lift to make changes for all students at once. This is appalling. My daughters in fifth and seventh grade have never, nor will they ever now, receive core instruction in E L A that is systematic and explicit, and due to the district's goal of focusing on only half of the elementary students. Another concern related to the data that was shared at this ed affairs meeting is related to teacher input, collection of teacher input. It has been well documented for years at these school board meetings, that it is the teachers across our district that are the superstars. It is wonderful that teacher satisfaction is taken into account when selecting programs to pilot and eventually adopt. In addition to teacher satisfaction, however, there were no reports, there was no reporting given to the efficacy of alignment to the science of reading of these two piloted programs. The reason is, is because one of these programs has yet to even be published. The other has declined to be reviewed by third-party evaluators to determine if their work is aligned to the science of reading. I plead with the board to look beyond just teacher satisfaction and demand to see how both of these programs are aligned to the science of reading. I thank the district team for meeting with myself and other families last week to discuss these concerns. Excuse me, when pressed on this issue, all that we were given was a couple paragraph statement from each publisher saying they were aligned to the science of reading. The district team should be able to spell out specifically to the entire W S S D community at the next ed affairs meeting, what components of each of these two programs are aligned to the science of reading, and most importantly, how they are aligned. It is very possible that both of these programs are, but after seeing data fall for numerous years in a row, I cannot just simply trust the district team at their word. I can't take them at face value when it comes to the literacy success of each and every child in this district, can you? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak about a topic on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, moving on to the minutes, the next item, next item for action on the agenda, now is approval of the minutes for the January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five regular board meeting, do I have a motion for approval? Ms. Williams, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Walkman, thank you. Any discussion about the minutes? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Moes, would you please take a walk?
Mrs. Dole?
Aye.
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whatsett?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Wacowski-Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to board committee reports, I want to remind everyone here and everyone watching that our educational affairs, facilities and finance and policy committee meetings are available for viewing on our YouTube channel, and I'll start with policy, and Mrs. Walkman had a comment she wanted to make.
Sure, and as, as Mr. Henry said there, the meeting information, the video, the conversation is available on the YouTube channel, but because it's a really important policy and it's receiving a lot of feedback, I thought it was important to give a quick update. So first of all, the, the meeting at which we reviewed it was the February twelfth policy meeting, so if anyone wants to review it, you were looking for February twelfth. The next meeting is going to be on March twelfth, so also an important date to mark in the calendar. What we went through on February twelfth, Dr. Scanlon shared with us the information that we've gathered to date, the different forums, walked through the different forums that we've had, we've had an October twenty-ninth forum that occurred in person, we've had focus groups that took place with high school students, high school staff, middle school staff, and then series of surveys that went out to parents, students, and staff. And so we walked through all of that, the feedback, summarized feedback, and had a, had an important discussion then at the February twelfth meeting in terms of what the proposed administrative regulations would do, what do they not do, and some back and forth on that. So really important again to, to tune in for March twelfth, and I'll just summarize at the most simple level right now, what was proposed and brought to that meeting was an off and away all day for cell phones at the elementary and the middle school level. The high school policy and, or administrative regulations as they had been proposed, had, cell phones were off and away outside from lunch and passing time through, between classes, also available before and after school. So that, those were the main differences, there were a lot of conversation about that difference at the high school. So again, welcome folks to join us at the March twelfth meeting, and of course, we're receiving some emails and feedback, and if you'd like to, you can please always reach out to a board member via email, and we'd be happy to hear that feedback as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Walkman, moving on to wellness advisory, Mrs. Dole or Dr. Grande?
Yeah, so the wellness advisory committee meeting met on January the twenty-seventh, and provided was a strategic plan, pathway number four update. The, the glossary of common language around behavioral health has been finalized and published, and is available on the district website. Also, there was review of behavioral health data via surveys, so first being the Pennsylvania Youth or P A S, which is a survey that includes questions about alcohol, tobacco, drugs, mental health, bullying, gambling, and violence, and this is conducted every two years for grades six, eighth, tenth, and twelfth, and possibly fourth this coming year. Just a note, you can review those results from 2023 on the district website under Student Services, and then the Assessments tab. And the second survey is a Panorama Student Survey, that's a research-based student perception survey that collects feedback data for teachers and school administrators, and the categories are emotional regulation, perseverance, positive feelings, sense of belonging, social awareness, and supportive relationships. And this survey is conducted more regularly with grades three through twelve, and looks for clinically significant trends, and allows counselors to identify students who may be at risk. And then finally, we had a focused topic, the school nursing department is working on a two-year project with CHOP to create a CERT team, or a cardiac emergency response team, for every building in W S S D. And this will focus on C P R and A E D, which is automated external defibrillator, try saying that three times fast, and includes training. This will be a designated team made up of ten percent of staff from each building, it will include a written response plan that is reviewed annually, and procedures for communicating with emergency responders and staff. And our next scheduled meeting will be March the twenty-fourth, where we will review the components of the P D E required triennial assessment.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Pennsylvania School Board Association, and Mrs. Wacowski-Smith.
Thank you. Right now, that industry is addressing some workforce shortages, and there was a report released on last Tuesday by Youth Science, which is a college and career readiness platform. Youth Science surveyed middle and high school students for their aptitude and interest in given areas. Well, interest was defined as self-reported activities, what someone wants to learn about, and they found that there are gaps between students' aptitudes and their interests, and Youth Science looked at a twenty-eight percent gap in students who had aptitudes for health science but did not report interest. Twenty-four percent gap in students who had aptitude for information and technology but no reported interest, and an eighteen percent gap in students who have aptitude for advanced manufacturing but no reported interest. So this report highlights that there is a critical challenge in schools to make sure that students are aware of what industries have work, and industries that have needs for students, and to be able to present that information to our students. And this is also another area, is election season. Right now, Pennsylvania has more than twenty-five hundred municipalities that require almost thirteen thousand elected officials to operate, according to the Center's survey. Many public roles, including judicial positions, school board seats, and municipal members are on the ballot this year. For anyone interested in a school board position, our organization, Pennsylvania School Boards Association, provides support to aspiring school board candidates. So please contact your local political party leadership to let them know if you are interested in becoming part of our elected community. Also, P S B A wants you to know that there are some myths surrounding learning that need to be dispelled, and they are, Richard Colada lists some of those pernicious learning myths that students hold, and this is in an attempt to help students learn a little bit more about their metacognitive skills. Myth one, there is a difference between left and right brain thinking, no longer the case, I figured that out myself. Myth number two, intelligence is a fixed quality. Myth number three, this one I also have to tell myself, you can multitask effectively. So myth number four, you have a learning style. Myth number five, talent beats persistence. Myth number six, learning is filling your brain. And myth number seven, study as close to the test date as possible. So hopefully that we can add some direct instruction in metacognitive skills for our students, and that is all from P S B A.
Thank you, Ms. Wacowski-Smith. I, I, still, I would argue with the left, the left hand and the right brain and whatever, but you know, I'm not, I'm sure that they're correct, and I'm incorrect. Moving on to Delaware County Community College Liaison, Mr. Miller.
The president's office of D C C C sent their report to us focusing mostly on institutional equity and their community building campaign, we'll make sure that it's attached to the materials, and other than that, no report.
Excellent, thank you. Delaware County Intermediate Unit, that's me, the next meeting, there's, there's no report this month, but the next meeting of the D C I U is March fifth. Moving on to Delaware County School Boards Legislative Council, and Mrs. Walkman.
Just a couple things, so recap from the meeting that was on February twelfth, the state budget, so Governor Shapiro has proposed a seventy-five million dollar increase in basic education, a forty million dollar increase in special education funding, pardon, and five-hundred-and-twenty-six million dollars through the adequacy formula, and for anybody that's been following, that that's making sure that there is appropriate funding for schools that have been under, basically under-resourced for many, many, many years because of how we fund schools in the Commonwealth. In addition, he's proposed a cap on cyber charter tuition at eight thousand dollars a student, and that eight thousand dollar per student cap somewhere, it says this, I'll come back to that, I lost the.
Uh, and that eight thousand dollar per student cap somewhere says this, I'll come back to that. I lost the note. Do you see it in here where it tells you how much that's supposed to save? It's down in here. Oh, I'm sorry. I, my glasses are really messed up because my dog chewed them, to be perfectly honest. Here we go.
Wait a second, are you saying that?
I, my dog chewed, no, no, the glasses, even worse. Um, the, okay, so putting an eight thousand dollar tuition rate, um, cap for cyber charter schools is estimated to save three hundred and seventy-eight million dollars annually if adopted. Um, a couple of points of newly introduced legislation, um, that will follow curriculum and instruction. So there's been, um, bills introduced to, uh, require cursive instruction, um, black student resource, blacks, black studies, resources and Holocaust education. Um, uh, school finance and operations, adjusting budget deadlines, um, a proposal around that and pension disclosures in student health and safety, um, proposals related to AEDs at athletic events. Yeah, um, daily mental health check-ins and school bus cameras. And, uh, in the category of transparency and parental rights, um, interestingly, um, cyber charter, uh, required attendance tracking bill's been introduced. And also a bill that would require parental consent for students to participate in clubs. Uh, so there's more in, um, in the detailed report, uh, that you'd find in the, uh, in the minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Wattman, and thank you for introducing a new excuse for not having your homework ready to go. Uh, all right, moving on to personnel. My glasses. We have nine items, sorry, dog didn't chew them yet. We have nine items for action personnel. Uh, are there any items on this list that anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Okay, no, seeing none. All right, uh, going through the personnel items, uh, resignations and retirements as listed, appointments as listed, leaves, leave of absence as listed, changes of position, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five curricular supplementals, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five conference requests, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five spring athletic supplementals, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five activity supplementals, ELA pilot arts and letters learning lab, twenty twenty-five summer band and string program. That's all of them there. Do I have a motion to approve letters, uh, personnel items A through J?
So moved.
Mrs. Holbert, thank you. Do I have a second? Right. Mr. Miller, thank you. Any discussion on those personnel items? So I'll start with, uh, Dr. Grandy at this end of the table. Okay. Let me still like, please.
Yeah, just, just quickly regarding item I, the ELA pilot. So it's my understanding we are going to be discussing both pilots at the next committee meeting. Um, but I did want to just clarify that this is for payment for professional development for the pilots that has in part already begun. Is that correct? To, to reimburse our teachers for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing down the, okay. Um, seeing that we don't have any more discussion, Miss Mosley, would you please take a roll call vote on items, personnel items A through J?
Mrs. Dole?
Aye.
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Wacowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving now on to, uh, the most exciting part of tonight's meeting is the, uh, election of superintendent, which I'm sure many are here for. So, um, we only have one action for item under, under that. Thank you, thankfully. Um, so, uh, do I have a motion to approve the letter L, the election of superintendent?
So moved.
Mrs. Wacowski Smith, thank you for being the person to move. That is fitting. Do I have a second? Mrs. Williams, thank you. Um, do we have any discussion, which I'm sure we would have some discussion. I'll start, uh, with Dr. Grandy and just go down.
Um, not, not a lot to say other than, um, a deep appreciation for board members who, um, Mary Jo in particular, it really helped shepherd this process forward. Um, I thought it was, uh, a, a great process for the board to go through. A lot of, uh, wonderful candidates that were brought in front of the board. Um, and a very good process of the board of really selecting an outstanding candidate, uh, to lead the district. And so, um, I think it's an exciting time, um, as we look at electing our next superintendent. Um, and I'm very optimistic, uh, about where he'll take us.
Mrs. Wattman?
Yes, um, to, to echo, um, what Dr. Grande said, I'll, I'll highlight specifically too that we, we had a, just a tremendous, tremendous group of candidates, um, for the, for the school district, which I think speaks volumes about the school district and, um, that the talent that's here in our teaching staff, in our administration, our community and the kind of community we are, our students. And so I couldn't, I, I, it was, um, it was pretty, pretty impressive to, to see that and to be part of that. And it felt great. Um, and I could not be more excited, uh, about Dr. Uh, Russell Johnston. Um, he rose to the top. And, uh, I think we all, we all saw that and, uh, just very excited to, to support him this evening.
Mrs. Williams, please.
And I'll kind of, well, first of all, thank you. I think the board really worked collaboratively and well, and we had great candidates that they, as they have already mentioned. Um, I can't wait for our community to meet Dr. Johnston. I think you're going to be just as thrilled with him and our selection as we are. I really am so optimistic. I, I, I felt kind of, I said to Kevin on Friday that I kind of felt like a kid on Christmas Eve because I can't wait for you guys to meet him. So I'm very, very excited. So.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Holbert, please.
Uh, I'll just say quickly that I'm, I'm very humbled to be part of this school board that, um, you know, looked at things so carefully and collaboratively and kept things apace. And took in, took, uh, the community, you know, in, into its, into its decision-making and, um, and very humbled by, you know, like the, the, the process and the people that, that applied. So.
Thank you. Mrs. Dole?
Boy, sitting at this end, it's all been said kind of already.
So I'll start the other end next.
No, but you know, I, I just reiterate what's been said. Um, I really, you know, again, we, we did have some very solid candidates. Um, and Dr. Johnston really impresses me as somebody with a passion for ensuring that others are seen, heard and valued. And I think that is very of the moment, um, for, for us and in general. And, um, I'll just also say that we do have some preliminary goals and objectives and, um, you know, that have been put forth, but I, I look forward to collaborate, collaborating with Dr. Johnston as a board to kind of further refine them. And, um, look forward to doing that, you know, within the next, I guess, I guess June thirtieth is our deadline for that, but look forward to that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
At the risk of being redundant, uh, I, I do think the community should feel really good about the kind of candidates that we attracted to this role. It was not, uh, you know, it wasn't Dr. Johnston or nobody. He rose above a very strong pool. And I think the reason he did is his collaborative, communicative leadership style and his commitment to all students. And I think those two things really shown through, and I think you will all see it as well as he begins leading our district.
Thank you. Mrs. Wacowski Smith, please.
Yes, and I just wanted to thank everyone on this board for their work through this process again, because I got to work with each of you. And, uh, I appreciate each of your, uh, participation into, uh, this process. And I do feel that the board worked hard to achieve consensus. And that, as you stated, uh, Dr. Johnston rose to the top and it was thirty-one candidates. Uh, so we had thirty-one candidates who applied to us, uh, from the states of Florida, Maryland, Delaware, uh, Massachusetts and, uh, from Pennsylvania, from across the state of Pennsylvania. So this, uh, process really allowed us to take a deep dive into who was available for, uh, this position. And, and we were fortunate to be able to spend time and to talk with the candidates and to really have a sense as all of us, uh, as to who would be the best fit. Not only was it qualifications, there were plenty of really highly qualified people. But what we were able to do through this process is really to, uh, create a good fit for us. And we really feel that Dr. Johnston will, uh, fit our community. He really did his homework on what our community was like and what our needs are. And, uh, we're very pleased to have him become part of us.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Whitsett, please.
Well, I am over the moon excited about, uh, Dr. Johnston becoming our next superintendent. He not only has the educational background that we, we asked for, um, he also satisfied us in, um, we were able to have a lunch and a breakfast. So, um, we meant them less formally. And his soft skills were put forth then and allowed us to see him as a, as a person, not just, uh, a superintendent with the, with the tie on. Um, we, we noticed that during the, the, the breakfast and the, uh, lunch that he seemed to like lean back into his chair, like, um, with the sense of, uh, uh, of just feeling like he was already a part of our, our school district. He was comfortable with all of us. And I think that he is going to bring in, uh, fresh infusion of ideas and work ethic and, um, he's a listener and a learner and he's, he's just one heck of a guy.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I don't want to, uh, keep him, he's gonna, he's gonna introduce himself. I do, I did want to thank, uh, Mary Jo, sorry, Mrs. Wacowski Smith down there personally. Uh, she kept us on task. Um, and, and her organization and, and some members of this board helped her, uh, with that as well. Uh, that was, that really kept us focused and allowed us to, um, get through candidates and, and find at the end of the day, uh, an amazing candidate for our, and, and, and for our school district. So I want to thank her for that. I also, um, just want to take one minute while I have it. I've, I've been, I've been lucky enough over the years to lead a number of different types of organizations. So I have the honor to sit in this chair with these amazing people up here. And I have to say, I've never been more proud to be part of a group than when I was working with all of this, uh, uh, school board, watching them try to find the right person for our school district. And we, we, it's more than just a school district. We're all a community here. Uh, and we're a relatively small community. Everybody knows each other. I think I'm looking out here, I think we all know each other. Uh, we all live here. Uh, so the, the, the seriousness with which this group took that task was really impressive. And I'm going to take that with me wherever I go. So that's enough of that. But I, the, the really lucky part I get to say is, uh, I get the honor and I'm very excited to, to introduce our new, uh, superintendent. Oh, we gotta vote. I almost jumped the gun. I hope he's not listening to that. We gotta vote. Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Vermin. I've, I broke Robert's rules of order. Look how excited I am. So with that, the discuss, any more discussion? I apologize. The board, look at me, I'm, I should be, I should be booted out of this seat. Um, it's terrible. Uh, Miss Mosley, would you please call a roll call vote?
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett?
One hundred percent aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Wacowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you for that. All right. All right. So with that, and that's it. Thank you. Um, I have the, the very distinct privilege and honor of in- introducing our new permanent superintendent, Dr. Russell Johnston. Sir, sorry, I got ahead of myself. I apologize.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you. That was such a, um, such a, uh, a moving, frankly, uh, introduction of me and I, I maybe the kindest words I've ever heard. So thank you all so much. I just, I really just want to start by, by continuing to express gratitude. Uh, I'm so grateful for this board of directors to, um, to offer me this tremendous opportunity. And when we, you were all just mentioning the search, I, I too just want to comment on such a positive, professional and frankly welcoming search for this position. You know, throughout, throughout the entire interview process, I was just really impressed by the questions that this board asked me. Really indicated your values and your commitment to the Wallingford Swarthmore School District students. And I thought to myself, if, if these are the questions that matter to them, I want to be a part of this team. And you know, I, I've served as a, as a teacher, as a special education administrator and a superintendent, and I, I now lead the, I lead education for the state of Massachusetts as acting commissioner. And while I've greatly enjoyed serving at the state level, I've actually always kept my eye on returning to the work that I love as a, as a superintendent. And this fall, I decided that I wanted to be closer to my extended family who live in Pennsylvania and Delaware and Maryland. So I very deliberately sought out a community that is well-aligned to my values. And WSSD is certainly that district. I have watched every board meeting and committee meeting this school year. I reviewed all available information and I even visited all five schools during the December vacation. Schools were closed, but I had an awesome opportunity to walk around and see the facilities. And at, at every turn, I see an amazing community that highly values educational excellence for all its students. And it will be my sincere honor to serve as your next superintendent. And I know for those of you who are just meeting me on the screen for the first time tonight, I, you know, I know I come from, I come to you from a distance, but I promise to shrink any distance between myself and the WSSD educators, administrators, students and families as soon as I am on the ground on May first. The most important thing that I want you to know about my leadership is that I listen and I learn to inform every action I take. And on day one, I will begin my listening and learning about your perspectives on the opportunities and challenges facing the district. And I, I think about this, um, you know, because I know that this is just really the only way I know how to lead is, is through our work together. You know, as Helen Keller said, alone we can do so little, together we can do so much. And I can't wait to see what we can do together to create excellent and equitable learning experiences for all WS- SSD students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Johnston, thank you so much for that. Um, we are very excited to have you on board and we can't wait for you to, to get here. So we're ready.
Ready to. Sounds great.
So we will be seeing you shortly. I'm sure, I'm sure.
Sounds great. Thanks so much.
Thank you and welcome. And you're, and you're welcome to stay and, and, and listen to the rest of the meeting if you like.
Oh, I don't miss a one, so I, I definitely will. Thanks so much.
And hopefully I'll do a better job too. I'll make it more, uh, efficient. Uh, okay, so, uh, thanks, everybody. That was, uh, very exciting and, uh, that was a, that was really a, a big step for our school district. So I appreciate that. All right. So moving on to less, uh, exciting things, but, but also very important. We have, uh, one item for action in policy. Are there any, is there anybody, well, we're going to discuss that for a while. So do I have a motion to approve, uh, the one item for action in policy?
So moved.
Mrs. Wattman, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think that was Mrs. Dole over there. Thank you. Uh, discussion on the one item we have for action in policy. Mrs. Wattman, I'll let you go first as the motion approver or motioner. All right, any discussion on? I'll see none. Uh, Miss Mosley, would you please take a roll call vote?
Mrs. Dole?
Aye.
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett? Ms. William, Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Wacowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
All right, thank you. Now moving on to curriculum. We have three items for action in curriculum. Are there any items on this list that anyone would, on the board would like to separate from the rest? Okay, seeing none on, under curriculum, we have field trips. The Kiln Guy LLC, he's going to fix our kiln up actually. And, um, hometown. Um, do I have a motion to approve, uh, items for action in curriculum?
So moved.
Mrs. Wacowski Smith, thank you. Mrs. Watauski Smith, thank you. Do I have a second? Mrs. Williams, thank you. Any discussion on items in curriculum? I'll start with that, that other end of the table is, I felt bad.
No, not with the same.
No, no, sorry. Mrs. Wattman, please.
I just think it's super awesome that we have a kiln and that we're fixing the kiln or replacing the kiln. And if you haven't seen the work that the high school students do using that kiln, you really need to get over there and see it. It's amazing, absolutely amazing.
I couldn't agree more. Yeah, the work is amazing that they do. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, none. Ms. Mosley, would you please take a roll call vote?
Mrs. Dole?
Aye.
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman? Ms. Whitsett?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Wachowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to student services. We have two items for approval in student services. Is there any items under student services that anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Okay, seeing none, we have educational service agreements as listed. And we have BT, Stutcher and Associates as listed as well. Do I have a motion to approve the items under student services?
Some moved.
Mrs. Holbert, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Tauski Smith, thank you. Any discussion? I'll start. Okay, none. Ms. Mosley, would you please take a roll call vote?
Mrs. Dole?
Aye.
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett? Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Wachowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to finance and facilities, we have 14 items for approval in finance. Are there any items on this list that anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Okay, seeing none. We have bills paid to vendors from January 1st, 2025 through January 31st, 2025. We have the financial statements, January 1st, 2025 through January 31st, 2025. We have the treasures report from January 1st through January 31st, 2025. We have the approval of budget transfers from January 1st through February 28th of 2025. We have contracts for TransFinder listed, contract for tri-state fire protection listed, ICS Consulting, Greg Giuliani Electric, Emergent Technology Services, access point purchase and E-plus technologies, firewall security subscription, and mobile hotspot, CM3 labor hours, server migration. I think that's all of them. Do I have a motion to approve the items under finance and facilities?
Some moved.
Dr. Grandy, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, thank you. Discussion, I'll start at the end of the table down, down there with Ms. Whitsett or Mr. Tauski Smith, are you saying something else? Ms. Dole, please.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, and I'm sure maybe Dr. Grande will talk about it a little bit perhaps, but I'm, I'm definitely in support of us utilizing a company for the consulting for the capital plan and the facilities planning. I just wanted to, so I did reach out to confirm that we're feeling that this price point is comparable with, I guess, the going rate for phase one services. So I'll ask that here as well, just to confirm that that's sort of on par with what we could expect those types of services to cost. Does that mean?
Yeah, this is a, I mean, this, this is about a $25,000 contract for putting together a project that is going to be well in excess north of $100 million. Is absolutely within, within any price point for a project manager, yes.
Thank Dr. Scanlon. Any other discussion on finance and facilities? Dr. Grandy, please.
So I just wanted to offer a quick comment on that same contract, just to make sure the public understands how this all fits into work that's been ongoing over the past year, year and a half at this point. You know, part of the strategic plan is focused on putting together a 10-year capital plan. And so it's been very important to go through in a methodical way to understand what our needs are, building by building, athletic facilities, outdoor, indoor, and really get a sense of what kind of deferred maintenance, you know, needs to be addressed and what kinds of significant capital projects the district needs to undertake as we plan ahead over the next decade. So ICS Consulting is being brought in to help us bring together all this data from all these different reports that we've put together to try to help us outline what we need to do and what's feasible to do within the fiscal constraints of the school district. And so it's a really critical investment, I think, because a small investment in a good plan will save a lot of money down the road in terms of sequencing this work in the most cost-effective way. Looking at the current debt structure that the district has, when certain debt is coming off the books and when we can begin to take on new debt for significant capital investments. We know there are a lot of needs in the district. We'll never be able to do every single thing that I think we all wish we could do. So there will be some prioritization that needs to happen. But this firm came to the facilities and finance committee meeting that we held, was that last week or the week before? I've lost track. And they've outlined a very good process for us over the next couple of months to pull all of this together. And there's, there will be opportunities for public engagement in that process. So there'll be some meetings that happen outside of school board settings, outside of the facilities and finance committee meeting for people to weigh in on what that plan ultimately will look like. But it's a critical roadmap for the district as we think about these financial investments. We can't make decisions on a year-by-year basis. It all has to be put together as part of a larger puzzle. And so this is going to help us do that.
Thank you, Dr. Grandy. That's a, that's a really great explanation. I appreciate you doing that. It helps that people can visualize why, what, why and how. So thank you for that. Any other discussion on our finance affiliates? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mosley, would you please take a roll call vote?
Mrs. Dole?
Aye.
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mrs. Wattman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Wachowski Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to audience recognition for response to items for action. Not on the agenda. I will not make you listen to me read that whole statement again, but please, we'll continue to follow our one-minute, three-minute timeline. We'll let you know when you have one minute left, left. And when you go up to the podium, please give us your full name and the address, the street address. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to an item not on the agenda? Sir, please.
All right, hopefully I can cover this within, I guess, the three-minute timeframe. My name is Dean Dennis, Emerald Lane Media PA. The issue I have here is that about a month ago, January 22nd, my son Alex came home and reported to me that he had been assaulted on the bus, physically abused by an aide on the bus. I reported it the, the next day to Principal Kroll. And, and my son went and also reported the same to Principal Kroll. And I'm not happy with how it's been handled. There's been no transparency, no accountability. People have not been forthright, forthwith. People have failed, failed my son, have failed me, have failed the community. I blame at this. Who do I blame? I blame Kroll. I blame Batic. I blame the, the bus aide. The bus slowed. I talked with all of them. And all they told me is a personal, it'll be handled internally. Then when I asked for any follow-up, I was told it would be handled, it has already been handled. Short-thrifted they were. I even just told them just an apology would do and nothing came about. So I have my expectations with this. I have what I expected to be and I, and I've seen these outcomes. So I come to the board today to help me fill in that gap, to reconcile, to square what I expect, what the community would expect, what's expected in their circumstance. As a mandated reporter, I have to follow certain guidelines. I, there's under penalty of law, plain and simple. It's, what had happened on the bus, you know, how I would respond versus how I'm supposed to respond, those are different issues. I was hoping that it could be just handled in a way that, hey, look, you know what? Maybe there's some sort of misunderstanding, maybe something went awry. But I need understanding. I need to know what happens, how the, how the school board responds in this, what rules, what regulations, what policies should be followed, what's best practices. Secondly, all I asked was for an apology. That's all I wanted. My son deserves an apology. He serves, he deserves for his apology to be, for his apology to be received and to be accepted. My son needs this to move on from the trauma and from the sequele of knowing that he matters. It's important that he matters. But more importantly, and additionally to this, it's just the mitzvah of forgiveness. He does not even deserve that sort of opportunity. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who'd like to speak on a matter not on the agenda? Yes, please.
Erin Traverso, Fairfield Drive. I just wanted to take just a minute and say thank you to Dr. Scanlon for coming and giving us a sense of normalcy again in the district and for supporting the teachers and helping them feel heard. And to the board as well. I gave you guys a hard time. A lot of us did. That's our job as parents is to look out for our kids and for the people that care for our kids, which are our teachers. So thank you for the exhaustive search that you did and for the seemingly amazing person that you found to take over for our district. He seems fantastic. And I love that he has a background in special, special education. I feel like there are a lot of parents in this district that feel like they have not been heard with their concerns about their special education kids. And so I think this is going to be really amazing. And so I just wanted to say thank you for your efforts and for listening. And I thank you again to Dr. Scanlon because we really appreciate all that you've done in the short time that you've been here.
Thank you. Anybody else have comments for items not on the agenda? Okay. Do we have any old business? Any new business? All right. I just wanted to say one last time, congratulations to the board, congratulations to our community, and welcome to our new superintendent, Dr. Russell Johnson. This meeting is adjourned.